Before you just say, "Thank you, Lord, for another day," we ask that you guide us to the right place so that we can do what's necessary to make our city a better place. We ask for all these blessings in God's name we pray. Amen.
Number two, roll call vote.
Markovich here. Spatelli.
Here.
Vanez. Calwinski.
Here.
Salinas.
Here.
Higgs.
Here.
Emerson.
Here.
And O' Pinker.
Here.
We had our presentation caucus before reading events.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vanez.
I move to accept the minutes of the March 26 meeting of the Common Council.
Second. Motion by Councilwoman Vanez, second by Councilman Spatelli to accept the minutes. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Number five, approval of claims. Mr. Chairman. Councilman Markovich.
Move for approval of claims from March 21st through April 4th for council meeting April 9th. Beginnings of claim dated 3/27/12 and ending with claims dated 4/4/12. Claim number 1794 through claim number 2021. For a total of $4,354,060.52, I so move.
Second. Motion by Councilman Markovich, second by Councilman Spatelli. Is there any discussion? Any discussion on two complaints? Any discussion? Clerk Golick roll call vote.
Markovich.
Yes.
Spatelli.
Yes.
Vanez.
Yes.
Calwinski.
Yes.
Salinas.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
And O' Pinker.
Yes.
Motion passed nine to nothing. Number six, public hearing.
Item A, ordinance 12-17 sponsored by Councilman Spatelli, and ordinance to reappropriate funds in the Hotel Motel Innkeepers Tax Fund for the Planning and Development Department.
Mr. President.
Councilman Spatelli.
I'd like to make a final rating for 1217. We're in a public hearing. We're in a public hearing also. We're in a public hearing now.
Yeah, we're in the public hearing.
Oh.
Is there anybody that'd like to speak in regards to 1217? If anyone would like to speak on 1217, come up to the podium. Public hearing is now closed. Number seven, communications. Communications.
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
Let me find the letter. I'll read it. Give me one second. This is Hammond, Professional Firefighters Association, Local 556 Hammond, P.O. Box 207, Hammond, Indiana, 46320. The Hammond, two, Hammond Mayor Thomas McDermott, Chief of Staff Tom Daberton, and city council members from Mike Hall, Contract Committee Chairman. The Contract Committee is in conjunction with the Executive Board of Hammond Firefighters, Local 556, would like to request a meeting with executive or a representative there of, and also any representative members of the city council for the purpose of beginning negotiations as well. We all know, realize the city of Hammond is facing tough times with both financial and safety issues, and look forward to working through these tough times as a team for the best results for the residents of Hammond. The committee feels that there are far more issues faced than just fiscal, and asks that the city representatives meet with members of the committee to start discussing issues in accordance with the current collective bargaining agreement. We would like to include members, or the representatives of the city council, as they are also included in the packages of any fiscal decisions in the past and currently clearly shows frustrations from the lack of knowledge of those agreements. We also ask in good faith that all parties involved in negotiations be either members of the Contract Committee, R and R, the Executive Board of Hammond Firefighters, Local 556, or members of the city administration to prevent any conflicts of interest, and a person who do not have the authority to make decisions for either party. Members of Hammond Firefighters, Local 556, are fully aware there has been some tough talks in the past, and understand that there are tough decisions for the future, and hope to be able to work through these, through this together. Respectfully, Mike Hall, Hammond Firefighters, Local 556, Contract Committee Chairman, Vice
Any other communications? Any other?
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
Received a letter from the Board of Works and Public Safety, Charlie Bling Superintendent on the letter here. As your request, Councilman Higgs, Hammond Park and Recreation has inspected the tree at 57 Waltham. We have determined the tree to be dead and has been removed along with the tree stumps. If there are any questions, feel free to contact us. Sincerely, Donna Muda, Superintendent.
Any other communications? Any other communications? Communications is now closed. Committee reports.
Mr. President. To bring out Council of the Whole, 1217.
There's a motion to bring out 1217? What committee was that in? Council of the Whole? Okay.
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
Council of the Whole will be bringing out 1226 and 1227.
Mr. President.
Councilman Salinas.
Yes, Streets and Alex Committee is going to be bringing out 1219, 1220, 1221, 1222, 1223, 1224, and 1225.
Any other committee reports? Committee reports is now closed. Number nine, ordinance's third and final reading.
Ordinance number 1217 sponsored by Councilman Spatelli, and ordinance to reappropriate funds in the Hotel Motel Innkeepers Tax Fund for the Planning and Development Department.
Final reading for 1217.
Motion by Councilman Spatelli, second by Councilman Salinas. Is there any discussion? Any discussion on 1217? Clerk Golick roll call vote.
Markovich.
Yes.
Spatelli.
Yes.
Vanez.
Yes.
Calwinski.
Yes.
Salinas.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
And O' Pinker.
Yes.
Ordinance 1217 passes nine to nothing.
Ordinance 1219 sponsored by Councilman Salinas, and ordinance amending ordinance number 4749, also known as section 72.06 of the Hammond Municipal Code pertaining to residential handicap parking spaces in Hammond. 1220, Councilman Salinas, and ordinance amending ordinance number 4749, also known as section 72.047 of the Hammond Municipal Code pertaining to permits for residential handicap parking spaces in Hammond. Ordinance 1221 sponsored by Councilman Salinas, and ordinance amending ordinance numbers 4749, also known as section 72.048 of the Hammond Municipal Code pertaining to the granted denial of residential handicap parking spaces in Hammond. Ordinance 1222 sponsored by Councilman Salinas, and ordinance amending ordinance number 4749, also known as section 72.049 of the Hammond Municipal Code pertaining to the display of permits for residential handicap parking spaces in Hammond. Ordinance 12-23 sponsored by Councilman Salinas, and ordinance amending ordinance numbers 4749, also known as section 72.050 of the Hammond Municipal Code pertaining to violations of residential handicap parking spaces in Hammond. Ordinance 1224 sponsored by Councilman Salinas, and ordinance amending ordinance number 4749, also known as section 72.051 of the Hammond Municipal Code pertaining to unauthorized use of residential handicap parking spaces in Hammond. Ordinance 1225 sponsored by Councilman Salinas, and ordinance amending ordinance number 7710, also known as section 72.052 of the Hammond Municipal Code pertaining to residential handicap parking space size in Hammond.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Salinas.
I move for final passage of 1219 to 1225.
Second. It's motion by Councilman Salinas, second by Councilman Emerson. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Markovich.
There's six or seven ordinances pertaining to handicap parking, and I know each one is specific for a certain thing. The titles for six out of the seven says the same thing, that's just residential parking. I would hopefully that the sponsor can right now tell, or just give a synopsis on each one, exactly what it's doing, and if not, have the law department, so people out there in the listening audience can get an idea of what's going on here with this handicap parking. Because all we did was just read the titles, and it doesn't say anything, unless, since it's third and final reading, that we have each ordinance written in its entirety, then people will know what's going on. But I would think that, being that there's seven of them, that at least either the sponsor or the law department takes 1219 and just says basically what it is, take 1220, basically what it is and what you have to do, because there's still going to be a lot of questions, and there's a lot of people not going to know what's going on. And that's my concern.
Attorney Cantor.
Mr. President, the section on handicap parking in Hammond was written in different sections. It's one ordinance, but there's six different sections. In order to make one change, you had to change in every one of them. The law department has received a complaint, several complaints, and the street department has received numerous complaints from handicap residents who live either near a residential church, or a grocery store, or a business, and the problem is, they come back from the doctor's office, or they come back from the grocery store, and somebody who is using that business has parked in their handicap spot because they also have a handicap placard. So any person with any handicap placard from Illinois, from Columbia, could come and park in their spot, and then the person can't get access into their house because they're disabled. And the Hammond police indicated to the street department that there was nothing they could do because the ordinance was not written to be address-specific. So in order to change it to be address-specific, every single place that mentioned a residential handicap parking spot had to also be amended to say residential, address-specific residential handicap parking. So every time it was mentioned in that section, which was six times, it had to be amended each time to make it specific. So from now on, if the street department gives a person a residential handicap parking, it will be residence-specific, and only the residents of that house can park there. In addition, we also did put a provision in the ordinance, the only change from that was that if the person is no longer residing there, the street department is authorized to move the sign, because we've had several instances where the person has moved away, died, gone into assisted living, and the parking place is still there, and then people are parking there. So we gave the street department authorization to move it if the person who qualified for the residential handicap spot no longer resides there. And I hope that clears it up.
Very well explained, Attorney Cantor. Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Clerk Golick roll call vote.
Markovich.
Yes.
Spatelli.
Yes.
Vanez.
Yes.
Calwinski.
Yes.
Salinas.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
And O' Pinker.
Yes.
Ordinance 1219 through 25 passes nine to nothing.
Ordinance 1226 sponsored by Councilman Higgs, and ordinance concerning cemeteries.
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
I move for final passage of 1226. I so move.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Higgs, second by Councilman Henoosa. Is there any discussion? Any discussion on ordinance 1226? Any discussion on 1226? Clerk Golick roll call vote.
Markovich.
Yes.
Spatelli.
Yes.
Vanez.
Yes.
Calwinski.
Yes.
Salinas.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
And O' Pinker.
Yes.
Ordinance 1226 passes nine to nothing.
Ordinance 12-27 sponsored by Councilman Higgs, and ordinance prohibiting parking at the intersection of Lyman and Carroll Streets.
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
I move for final passage of 1227. I so move.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Higgs, second by Councilman Spatelli. Is there any discussion on 1227? Any discussion on 1227? Any discussion on 1227? Clerk Golick roll call vote.
Markovich. Spatelli.
Yes.
Vanez.
Yes.
Calwinski.
Yes.
Salinas.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
And O' Pinker.
Yes.
Ordinance 1227 passes nine to nothing.
President O' Pinker, that concludes the ordinances for final passage.
Number 10, introduction to ordinances, there are none. Number 11, resolutions, there are none. Number 12, new and unfinished business.
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
I just wanted to personally thank Owana and Redevelopment Commission for finally getting the replica of Dr. King placed at MLK Park, and I really want to say thank you, those individuals who participated and helped us bring this to fruition and make it a reality here in my district. And so I personally want to personally say thank you to Owana, and I also want to send a letter. So I so move that we send a letter to her thanking her.
Thank you.
For her hard work.
Any other new and unfinished business?
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Markovich.
We had Joel Connor from the Law Department give us a recap of lawsuits for the city, and requesting a letter being sent to the Law Department. Joel Connor said that we dismissed, I don't know, 60-something, I don't know, cases, and the question I had, how much money we spent to dismiss these cases? I mean, anybody can dismiss things and all that, and that's fine, and that's good, because it's going away, but we didn't get a dollar cost. And I would like to have a letter sent to him asking for itemization of all of these lawsuits that were dismissed, what was paid to the attorneys that represented the city, and if there was settlements, what the settlement was, and what the total cost was per case that was settled or dismissed. I so move.
Second, and just a point of order, the last one, we motioned it second, but we didn't say all in favor of sending the letter of thank you to Owana, so.
Backtracking, going to, all those in favor on Anthony sending a letter to, was that Anthony?
Owana Miller.
Owana Miller. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Letter will be sent. Second one is a request by Councilman Markovich. Who was that second by?
Higgs.
Councilman Higgs to send a letter to the Law Department requesting distributor of funds, hourly rates, or... All those in favor of the letter?
Aye.
Opposed? Letter will be sent. Any other new and finished business?
Mr. President, I received a correspondence from the Sanitary District of Hammond in regards, it says, "In response to your letter dated on 4/26/2011 to Joseph O'Connor, a letter dated on 12/19/2011, one, a letter dated 1/25/2012, and now 3/14/2012, to the Board of Public Works and Safety, who has forwarded a copy of these letters to me." I have already responded to both of your concerns on 5/4/2011, 1/17/2012, 2/8/2012, and now with your correspondence, I have included copies of your response for your recollection. In summary, 910 was repaired and resurfaced by the City Engineering Department, 5665. So after televising our sewer infrastructure, no issues were found concerning the settlement. I believe it is homeowner's issue and left over to the street reconstruction project. We will resurface this area ourselves to assist the City Engineering Department.
Any other new and finished business?
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Salinas.
Yes, and I would like to introduce the ordinance, 1228, weekend.
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
Point of order, it should be suspend the rules to introduce the ordinance, so that should be approached in that subject matter.
Do I have a motion to suspend rules?
I make a motion to suspend the rules. Second.
It's motion by Councilman Salinas, second by Councilman Spatelli to suspend the rules. Clerk Golick roll call vote to suspend.
Spatelli.
Yes.
Vanez.
Yes.
Calwinski.
Yes.
Salinas.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
And O' Pinker.
Yes.
Motion passes. Eight, nothing, one, none, vote to suspend the rules.
Mr. President, Councilman Markovich asked me, I think we suspend the rules to consider it, which requires a two-thirds vote, but to suspend the rule to pass it on the day essentially requires nine votes.
That's what it was to consider it. That was the motion to consider.
I just want to make sure that...
What did Councilman Markovich vote?
He didn't. He didn't. And anytime, just... Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
Just for clarity, Robert Rule's order says that any member of the Common Council that's on the floor has to either vote yea or nay, or abstain. If you're on the floor, you have to do one or the other.
Councilman Markovich, what was your vote? All right, motion to suspend the rules passes nine to nothing. Rules are suspended.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Salinas.
I would like to have Clerk Golick read 1228, please.
Ordinance 1228 sponsored by Councilman Salinas, and ordinance to transfer unspent funds from the 2011 accounts of the Second District to 2012 gaming money account.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Salinas.
I move for first and second reading of 1228.
It's motion by Councilman Salinas, first and second reading on 1228. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Spatelli. Is there any discussion?
Chairman.
Councilman Colinski.
I guess my only question would be, are these numbers correct at this time, and do they correspond with the controller's figures?
Any other discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
Problem would be, is, and what I understood from being in the caucus, that, you know, these are just figures that were given, and we're not sure, and later, before this, we conclude this meeting, I'm going to send a letter to engineering in regards to their numbers and the controller numbers, so that we're all on one page, because just needed to know if there was money still available, and if that money needs to be transferred now in my district, as well as my colleagues. I'm sure they would be interested to find out if there's money available to be utilized for this year as well.
We're in discussion on 1228. When we go back into regular business, you could have a letter sent. Councilman Higgs.
Mr. Chairman.
Any other discussion? Councilman Markovich.
I'd like to make an amendment to 12-28.
There's a motion on the floor to amend 1228. Do I have a second?
Well, I got to make the motion first.
Okay.
I might say, "Give all the money to the Councilman at large." We're in a title that says, "Ordinance to transfer unspent funds for 2011 accounts," where it says, "The Second District," I would say, "All six districts to the 2012 gaming money fund account." I so move.
Motion by Councilman Markovich, do I have a second for his amendment? Do I have a second?
Mr. President, what was the motion again?
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Markovich.
What I'm doing here is, we had discussion in caucus, that, trying to get the information for all six district councilmen, so that they would know how much money they have in their district to transfer over from 2011 to 2012. So just by changing the title from Second District and saying, "All six districts," then all six district councilmen will get the same information. That's all I'm trying to do here.
Mr. President.
No, it won't do that.
Councilman Higgs.
The problem with that is, this particular ordinance is reflecting Councilman Salinas' district and his money's. It would make no sense for us to add additional district councilmen to that at this point. What we could do is make a request in regards to finding out the additional information that we need, so that we make, allocate more money back to our district, but that would be useless.
Okay, it's amended by Councilman Markovich to add all six districts on this 1228 ordinance.
No, he didn't get a second.
There is no second.
There was no second.
There was no second.
So now you need to call three times, and if it...
Motion fails. Any other discussion? Any other discussion on 1228?
Mr. President.
Councilman Emerson.
If I could just add, the Controller's been, you know, as far as I can see, giving me reports right along, you know, I went in and asked him what this year looked like, and then he also just submitted to me, I'll speak for myself, a listing of what I've spent already, so I mean, the information, I think he's trying to do the best he can with the numbers, lot of numbers out there.
I disagree with you, Councilman Emerson.
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
No one's trying to challenge whether or not he's doing a good job. The question is, is whether or not the numbers are correct when it relates to the engineering and the controller. And I think we all need to know that. And you may have some additional money, Mr. Emerson, that's available, if you just take a little time and go down there to the engineering department, because from what I understand, the controller is telling me today that he, all he has is deal with the numbers, so if you submit a number here, all that money may not be utilized for a particular project, so some of that money reverted back to the engineering department, and the only person who would probably know that is engineering. So you probably need to contact engineering, and that's why it's so important at the end of this meeting, we can send a letter and find out exactly what the numbers are.
Any other discussion on 1228?
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Colinski.
Reason I asked my question was because I understand that Councilman has these figures today, but sometimes there are claims in motion that are going to be paid out when they get to the controller's office or the claim. So my question is, the numbers that Councilman Salinas got today, are they accurate between engineering and the amount of money that he has?
and the amount of money that he has in the controller's accounting? Does that make sense?
Councilman Kowinski, could you step up here? Mr. President.
Councilman Opinker.
I think what we should do with this is table it for two weeks, look into the numbers, see where we're at with this and then bring it out in two weeks.
Is that a motion?
Making the motion to do that.
I'll second.
Mr. President. There was no, that's the point of order because they... All I got was, we should do it in two weeks. I didn't hear a motion to table. We need to hear a motion.
The motion is to table this for two weeks. Ordinance 1228.
All right, then. We had discussion, you brought up a discussing point, a discussion point. Now, did you make a motion?
Motion to table this ordinance 1228. Till the next meeting.
So we have a motion to table 1228 by Councilman Opinker and seconded by Councilman Spitali. Call for the vote.
Markovich.
No.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Salinas.
No.
Higgs.
No.
Emerson.
Yes.
Henosa.
No.
Opinker.
Yes.
Kowinski.
Yes. Motion to table passes five to four.
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
I make a motion that we return back to the regular order of business. I so move.
Motion by Councilman Higgs to return to regular order of business. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Henahosa. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion to return to the regular order of business.
Mr. President.
Councilman Henahosa.
Friday night, April the 6th, there was a fire in the fifth district off Orchard Drive, at least 174th and Kentucky. Maybe Mr. Pinker probably knows, but there's going to be a, there was a last minute fundraiser put together at the Hammond Moose tomorrow from 5:00 to 8:00 o'clock. There's a fundraiser for Shar and John Basil, Charlene and John Basil, at the Hammond Moose from 5:00 to 8:00. That's at 7,500 Klein Avenue Service Road. The house was burned down completely, down to the ground. They left them with nothing. So anybody that can help out at this fundraiser, it'll be Wednesday from 5:00 to 8:00 at the Hammond Moose on the Klein Avenue Service Road.
Are there tickets available, Council?
No, they're going to be selling, they're going to be accepting money at the door. Uh... Do you keep the dates, Councilman? It's going to be, it's going to be, uh, this Wednesday. This Wednesday from 5:00 to 8:00. Shar and John Basil's, their daughters, they've worked for the Jink Shepherd Center for the pools, as lifeguard, so anybody can help.
Mr. Daberton, before you leave.
Sorry. Thank you.
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
I got a correspondence from RBA. The RBA needs your support. Show your constituency that you personally care about maintaining and raising the quality of life in northwest Indiana by attending the rally on April 19th at 6:00 PM at the Hammond Civic Center. We ask your help in the efforts to generate some positive energy and momentum for the Lake County searchers for answers for a long-term funding for the needs of service. Elected officials and riders are invited to speak on it on behalf of the buses. Please RSVP by email, lizs@via marketing net or by calling 219-769-2299 by the end of your business day on Tuesday, April 10th. That's tomorrow. When you respond, please indicate if you would like an opportunity to speak at the podium during the rally, two to three minutes only. I also invite you to visit www savingsbuses.com for general information on this and to sign an online vision of our petition. Thank you in advance for your time and I look forward to seeing you at this exciting event. Sincerely, Thomas Brown, Executive Director of RBA.
Any other new and unfinished business? Any other new and unfinished business?
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
I just wanted to let everyone in the listening audience know that Urban Community Watch will meet Wednesday, April 11th, at Greater Hammond at 8:24 Hoffman, 6:30 PM. If you're in the neighborhood, please come out. Thank you.
Any other new and unfinished business? New and unfinished business is now closed.
Chairman.
Councilman Markovich.
We had discussion about, I guess one of the reasons why Councilman Salinas's ordinance was tabled because nobody has information. And I brought that up in the caucus, so I'd like to have a letter sent to the engineering department requesting what funds are available for each of the six council districts that was left over from 2011, what money, if any money, is encumbered still to be paid from 2011 to 2012 and to have that information sent to this city council so that all councilmen can have an idea of how much money they have left in their budget from 2012 to be forwarded over to 20, from 2011 to 2012. I so move.
Second.
There's a motion by Councilman Markovich, second by Councilman Higgs to send a letter to engineering on the funds left from last year to this year. All those in favor?
Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Councilman Markovich.
And if any information needs to be forwarded to controller to keep him in the loop and vice versa.
Okay, it's motion by Councilman Markovich, second by Councilman Higgs to send a letter to engineering and also city controller. All those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed?
No. One nay. Did you say nay?
Two nays.
Two nays?
Seven yeses, two nays. Passes. Any other new and unfinished business? New and unfinished business is now closed. Public expression. Mr. George Stoya. Mr. Alvin Cheeks.
Alvin Cheeks, 832 Merrill Street. I guess the reason why I'm giving my full address because my neighbor's house was shot and it's the 800 block of Merrill Street. My address is 832 for a person, I guess, that was assuming that I live at 800 block of Merrill. I live at 832. Second of all, I come to ask for the council's help in putting a golfing hole in the park. My son has asked you, Councilman Higgs, and I'm asking you again, if you have those extra dollars in your budget from 2011 to... Don't forget about him in the golf hole. You know, he just told me to remind you of that, so I know you tickle by that. And Nike already passed out the golf clubs to the kids, so they're ready to play. Also too, I've been asked to negotiate the peace between the black community and the Hispanic community, you know, by the state of Indiana. And there's no gripe between the black community and Hispanic community. It's a misoma out there. So I will do that if that's why, because I've been getting a lot of police calls to my house and a lot of death threats. I find death threats funny because I've worked all over the world and I don't adhere to any of those. So I'll be leaving once again and those who want to do that can. I just want to thank you guys for having to wear it all and all those things and thank you.
That's it with public expression. Could I have a...
Motion to adjourn.
Motion by Councilman Higgs, second by Councilwoman Vines. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?